You're not leaving the room, so. There you go. There you go. All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees, meeting to order on Monday, March 20th at 6:30 PM on my watch. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in Village Hall, as well as for those that choose to do so, we are on Zoom and there is an audio call-in number as well, both at the top of the agenda that has been posted. We have a quorum, the agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, then we have public appearances. It's the public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public, we just wish that you share your name, your address, your municipality, as well as hold your comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak. That way, we can capture this for the public record. So with that, I'll pause. Anybody in the room or on Zoom, please feel free to take it over. All right, with that, we did have a online submittal form, wish to speak, which they indicated they did not wish to speak, they just wanted to weigh in. Katie Morang on 319 Southern Grange, her support for the library. Again, we'll capture that for public record. Next, then, we have discuss and consider our meeting minutes held on March 6th. Any questions, comments, edits regarding the meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Heidi, thank you.
David.
All right, gotta get my hearing aid on the side. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next, then, we move on to unfinished business, discuss, consider Resolution 2023-01. This is a resolution authorizing the village administrator to sign the closing documents on the village's behalf regarding the Commerce Park land sale to One Community Bank.
So this is pretty straightforward. Basically, the village already agreed to sell this parcel to One Community Bank, they've got their site plan approval, and we've already got a development agreement. It's just First American Title wants to have some sort of documentation, just saying that Matt has the authorization to sign all the closing documents.
And as Rick noted for the rest of the Village Board, we've done this before as well. Any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the village administrator to sign the closing documents on the village's behalf regarding the sale to One Community Bank.
Thank you, Brittany, is there a second?
A second.
Chris, I think you were in there. Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, there's Vince. Anyone opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next, then, we shift right into new business, and we just, first item up there is discuss and consider a maintenance agreement on Faber Road. It's your show tonight, Rick.
Right. So items A and B are linked here, basically. So Faber Road is that little stub of a road that comes off of County N. It's within the town's jurisdiction, so it's technically within the town right now. But it's right on the line, basically, where the village and town's jurisdiction changes. So for the development in TID 10 to go forward, we basically have to come to an arrangement with the town regarding Faber Road. So they aren't willing to do a jurisdictional transfer at this point, so, but they agreed to do a maintenance agreement, basically for the foreseeable future regarding Faber Road. So this gives the village, basically, full authority to do what it needs to do to Faber Road to make the development work, but it's not a jurisdictional transfer. The town would like to negotiate that as part of a boundary agreement with the village, but this at least accomplishes what we need to, to make the development move forward into 10.
And the town already signed it, I see.
Yes, they approved it at their meeting last week.
Any questions from board members on this?
I'll move approval, did you have a question? Of the maintenance agreement for Faber Road as presented?
Thank you, Heidi, thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then we move right to discuss and consider, as Rick alluded to, the approval of development agreement with TI investors and of Cottage Grove LLC, and this is related to Zilber.
Yes, so this is a development agreement for, within TID 10. I refer to them as Zilber, that's TI investors, I think is a subsidiary of Zilber. So, basically, they've, we've already had a precise limitation plan approved by the village board, so this would be for, you know, light industrial. They are going to do a $53 million assessed value guarantee. The village will put forward around 11.7, I think, for the tax incentives, but the way that it's structured, those are all pay-go, so it's not like the village taxpayers or the village itself is going to be providing the money. It's only paid from tax increment that is generated by property within the TID. So, once the TID closure date occurs, if the full amount hasn't been paid, it's not an ongoing obligation, it just ends with the TID. But based on the financial analysis that's been performed, the, it should pay out as long as the development occurs on schedule. On top of that, the developer is going to be installing utilities up County Highway End, so sewer and water, and then extending Faber Road to the landlocked parcel that would potentially allow for development on that site in the future. So it's consistent with the negotiations that the, that we, are the, we've talked about in previous sessions, so we feel that it's approvable in its current form.
Any discussion or motion, consideration for motion? All right, thank you, Dave, thank Brittany. Any further discussion then? Having heard none, then, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. And moving down the agenda, then, we move to discuss and consider a sound amplification for a permit for the Cottage Grove Fireman's Festival. Yay, we're moving to summer, all right.
John, and board members, the fire department isn't able to be here tonight because Jason had a meeting with one of the vendors for the Fireman's Festival, but he wanted me to convey to you all that it's basically the same as last year. So they have their two approvals on here tonight.
Any questions, comments from board members?
I did want to add on, just as it pertains to this, we did have a discussion at Parks and Rec, I think it was last month, to talk about the parking flow, because we'll be doing construction in that area where the Fireman's Festival parking overflow is. And it's in the contract that should be accessible during the festival, so then the construction equipment will be out of the way, so they'll be able to utilize that. They presented a parking flow down the new bike path, and then in to park, and then parking in the usual spot, and then out onto Clark on that path. So as, I guess, part of their park hours and sound amplification, that's kind of the layout. In the future, we might have to revisit how that flow works with fields and such, but I just wanted to bring that up since we're talking about festival.
All right, thank you, Heidi. Anything from anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve a sound amplification permit for Cottage Grove Fireman's Festival.
Thank you, Brittany, thank you, David. Any further discussion then? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then we move right, connected to that, is discuss and consider requests from the Cottage Grove Fire Department to extend the park hours, Fireman's Park, from June 12th through June 20th of this year, again, for the festival. Thank you, David, is there a second? Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next, we have another election coming up, so this is discuss and consider, holding our April 3rd Village Board meeting virtually due to the spring election on the 4th, and that is to get this room set up to handle all the voters.
It's not new. You have to just remember that we were in COVID, so we were doing everything virtually. So. And then it worked out so well that, that it's really handy to be able to have the room during the day to, to take care of all the setup, so.
Let me go to two spots. Is there going to be enough room here to still have meetings here, or are you still going to want to do those virtually the day before?
It's still going to be the same setup, so we probably will be requesting to be virtual.
Good question, Chris.
Make a motion to approve holding the April 3rd, 2023 Village Board meeting virtually due to the election.
Is there a second? Thank you, Chris, thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then we move to, again, thinking about the spring, discuss and consider no May proclamation suspending the grass height requirement. We did this for the first time, I believe, last year, and there were a number of citizens that took advantages, or residents took advantages, and others who chose not to. So, any questions, comments, discussion?
Did we figure out if there were any signs left that someone could?
I did not confirm, but I'm 99.9% sure I know right where they are.
All right.
If not, I will get some more ordered tomorrow.
Perfect. Great, thanks, treasure.
So I'm trying to remember the discussion on this last year, because I think it was wanting to do this as a trial run before making a permit, so we could make it a permanent fixture in the ordinance, if that's something that the village would want to pursue. I believe we just framed it this way last year, just to see what the public's perception was. Yeah, so it would be a pretty simple ordinance change, if that's the direction the board wants to go.
I don't think supporting pollinators has a limit of time, really, in May, and, I mean, maybe it'll shift tape. Changing when the bees are migrating, but. No, no, it doesn't quite have the same ring to it. We need that. Yeah, I'd be open to, to changing that. Do we, is that something we should think about for next year? Would that just, would it be easier and then do this for this year?
Yeah, I mean, this will work for this year, and I'm sure we could get an ordinance drafted before May of next year, so.
Other than the signs. Any other discussion? Thank you, David, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Then we move right into Village Reports and Boards, Commissions, Committees, starting off with Parks and Recreation, Forestry. Heidi.
Sure, this is, we have our regular meeting for the month coming up this week, but this is something we wanted to get through before then the next board meeting. There is the Parkinson's Run, and that's annual, but they're expanding kind of the start-finish line to have more activities, which include Mobile Petting Farm, so, Sean, I don't know if you have some more information to share on that?
Nope. For the memo, they're just looking to, to do, as Heidi mentioned, a mobile petting farm, tank of chicks, some bunnies, some lambs, goats, chickens, ducks, all in a confined area, fenced area, and just need to suspend the ordinance for that period of time.
Any, are we going to be able to do parking? Because these, obviously, will, some of them require trailers and such, are we going to find a spot for them so they're not taking valuable stalls, like, in the park?
My guess is that it'll be off to the, they'll probably park off to the, on the grass, is what I'm hoping for.
Oh, all right.
If not, we'll, we'll make sure that they're not taking up valuable stalls.
Because it, there'll be a lot of folks there, I'm sure, based on.
It'll be a busy purse that day.
Yeah. Any questions on this?
I'll make a motion to suspend the ordinance 230-2 from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM on August 15th to allow animals in Bakken Park.
All right, thank you, Brittany, thank you, David. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. This is not to take away from the occasional fox that runs through that PLD that I've seen when I'm running. Next, then, we move right to Public Works, Properties, and Sustainability. Heidi, continue the show.
Yep, thanks. So we met on March 7th, and we had a brief update on the solar panels at MSB, and that's scheduled to be installed in April, so that's exciting. We're hoping to plan some kind of event when the installation's complete and ready to turn on, so probably in May sometime, but we'll, I'll keep you posted on that. We had a fairly lengthy discussion with Waste Management about the e-waste collection. If you remember from years past, Waste Management would come along and drive the whole village, and you would put your e-waste out at the curb, and they would pick it up. So, due to a number of concerns on their end with staffing and safety of driving up and down the streets, they are proposing an e-waste collection day, which a lot of other communities do, although it is shifting the burden on our residents to transport their electronics to the e-waste day, collection day. It also requires, from Brian's experience in Verona, a lot of staff assistance time, helping move things around, and they also requested volunteers to check addresses, like, they, they won't be providing really any assistance at all, and it is written in our contract to provide this service to our residents. So the committee thought, you know, this is something, you know, a lot of communities do this, maybe this is something worth pursuing, but also negotiating the, the contract with them as well. So I think that's something that the committee was hoping Brian would dig into more and perhaps work with Rick and team on, you know, what, what that means for our contract. I don't know if anyone has any feedback on that topic.
It's in the contract, pick the stuff up.
It might be, yeah, revisiting things in the, the contract that they may not be fulfilling, you know, that, it might be heard about some more, so keep an eye out on that.
Abiding by the contract, I did request the date, and I'm waiting to hear back from them, because it is a mutually agreed date. I was supposed to hear back Friday, I have not heard back. I will probably reach out tomorrow or later this week, give them a little bit of time. The individuals that were sent here from Waste Management have never ran an e-waste before, they really had no knowledge of the process, so I, I think they're still doing a little work on their own, really, to find out what they should do. I don't know if they really know what they're doing as far as this event is considered, so I'm giving them, giving them a little bit of time, but I'm going to reach back out again, and then I'll probably reach out to Rick at some point, just to see what our options are. Well, yeah, they, they basically said, we just don't have any help, so we can't do it. And I said, well, that, I'm short-staffed too, so, I mean, you know, the problem is, we don't have a secured site, you know, and we did ask, well, what happens if people leave outside? They're going to lock up the trailer, and they said, we'll just leave it there, we'll take care of it in the morning. The problem is, when the DNR finds out that we're having a, you know, possible lead glass being broken at that site, they're going to want to do a site visit. It just opens up a can of worms for us to really get into, so I just want to be careful on how we move about this, if we're going to actually have a site designated for e-waste. We're fortunate enough to have a, you know, Dane County's right down the road, you know, for now. I mean, it would be something that'd be great to do for our residents, but there's a time and, there's a different time for that, and we're just not prepared at this point.
Yeah, they, they talked about safety of their trucks driving, and the, using all the fuel to drive the trucks up and down every street, but, right, exactly, it's in the contract that they provide them. But I'll make sure to, we'll update as we hear more about that. We also have, then, in front of us today, updated mailbox policy, which was kind of out of date. This is now if a mailbox is damaged. We used to reimburse $35 for a replacement or reinstall of a new mailbox, but as everyone knows, $35 doesn't get you too far these days, so we thought we'd look at that again, and then it kind of lays out the order of, of how to get that reimbursement. Brian, if you want to expand on any of that?
We, we polled about 12 communities in the surrounding area. The average was about $75 reimbursement, the high end was $100. The other change that we're doing here is, we're not part of the reinstallment process. The reimbursement happens after they've met the USPS guidelines. The reason more communities are getting away from this is, you usually have a difference in opinion on where the mailbox should be placed, and it's really up to the post office where that goes. We will assist, I mean, obviously, the only time we're really a part of this is if it's damaged from our plow, and obviously, we can do some sort of assistance with that, whether it's putting up a temporary or some sort of assistance with helping them do this, but it's really up to them to do it, and it's up for us to make sure that they follow the guidelines, and then, once that's done, they get reimbursed, up to $100. That was the committee.
So that's an item that we have to adopt at board level?
I will tell you, we have not hit one yet this year, so.
No, that's good, that's, 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 Brian, you just pushed it. That's at least three more snows now, thank you. Any questions on the mailbox policy as presented? This is actually a discuss and consider. Thank you, David, is there a second? Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries.
We also have the annual MS4 report, so I think that's probably Jay and Brian, and I'm sure it'll be transitioning at some point.
Yes, this, hopefully, the last time I'm pulling this thing together. It's in your packet, and it's not all the attachments we submit to DNR, a lot of, we resubmit plans every year, and then there's a lot of attachments to go with it, but I didn't want to make the packet ridiculously huge, but it's just the efforts we do, public outreach and education, and then, you know, how we're managing salt and everything else that's related to stormwater as an MS4 permitted community, so I can stop there and just take any questions if there are any, or if anybody wants to look at everything we do have to submit any time, just give me a call.
Refresh me, is there any feedback from the DNR that you get after you submit?
My gut is, they don't look through everything. I think it's more of a, make sure it's all there in case you're audited type thing, and just to make, I mean, like, I've talked to Brian as we're going to transition, every time when I do this, I'm like, wow, we could be doing this better, or that better, and it is just a check on your municipality too, and you want to make sure if they do audit, that you're doing things right.
Right.
I can't believe they'd have the staff to go page by page through these reports every year.
Just curious.
So that is just presentation on that, then, we do have, we talked about the runoff management grants previously, so I believe this is an official resolution to apply for the grant, is that, this didn't come through committee, but it's on, on under committee, is that kind of what the?
The resolution?
Yeah, the resolution. So that's to have Strand prepare the application to continue our improvements on our stormwater management and other, other items, yep. So that we do have to discuss and consider. Thanks.
Any questions on that resolution from any board members? I think the internal workings of just the village having a resolution is important, correct?
I'm here. With my seatbelt on, but not driving.
Can I just say?
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the, the resolution, I mean, it goes in with the grant, so it's part of the grant application, there are several different pieces of, of literature you kind of want, you need with that to get the points, basically, it says, you guys are committed to, you know, proceeding forward if you get the grant and utilizing it, and, you know, they're committed to this, to this application.
In that case, I'll make a resolution, I will, I will approve the Resolution 2023-2,
All right, thank you, David, is there a second? Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion then? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Heidi, from Public Works?
So we did have a update on staff recruitment, so we do have our two supervisors both in place now, is that, no, yes?
No, yep, yes, we do. Yeah, I don't know if everybody's aware or not, Dave Veken is now our street superintendent, doing a great job, two superintendents are working, it's working out just as I expected it to, so moving forward in a good direction.
Great. And then our next meeting, we moved to the 11th, because first Tuesday was Election Day, so we'll meet next on the 11th, and we do have a open spot, as we did have a member just had too much on their plate, so we do have one spot open on the committee. And we do have a open spot, as we did have a member just have too much on their plate, so we do have one spot open on the committee. And that's all, thanks.
Thanks, Heidi.
Hey, Heidi, with that, with Dave taking the street superintendent position, that now leaves two public work positions open that we're looking to fill here in July.
Thank you, Cameron. Next then, we move to utility commission, Chris.
We met on Wednesday, March 8th, for the first time at Village Hall. First thing we did was, we had a discuss and consider about potentially changing our online payment provider. We had a presentation from, what was it, PSN? Pa, okay, PayaGov. We tabled that until we get a little bit more information until the next meeting. We talked about the new utility superintendent, John, who started two days prior, met him. Ryan is working on getting a quote for a system-wide SCADA upgrade. Talk about that now or just leave it till later?
You got a lot of data.
Okay. And there was a couple of updates on a couple of places, Authentix, a couple of the san, excuse me, a couple of sanitary servers have dips in them, so those are going to have to be fixed when it gets a little bit warmer. And talked about a new lift station on TID 10, those over project. And I believe that is it, unless I missed anyone?
Just kind of to put some follow-up with the online payment provider, as part of that process, we reached out to our current accounting system and kind of got some initial quotes on what it would cost to integrate the PayaGov system with Civic. And it became, they let us know that they also offer an online payment system that would integrate directly with our accounting system without any cost. So we're currently doing a little bit more research, they offered to match what PayaGov would have given us for a fee structure. So just doing our due diligence before we make a full commitment with one or the other, and a subsequent presentation will come to the board.
Thank you, Cameron. Next then, if there are any questions for Chris, Cameron, then we'll move to plant commission. We have a couple of discuss and considers, we did meet on March 8th. We reviewed a submittal from Madison Rugby for a site amendment, and this was for a permit for field lights in their complex at 448 Clark Street. We had a presentation by Chris Miller of Chris Miller Construction for a potential open lot on Main Street. This was for feedback only. And then we had a public hearing regarding the zoning text amendment change regarding setbacks, and we do have a discuss and consider on that as well. And then Aaron kicked up and queued up the housing study as far as the plant commission's starting to look at that, and in particular, the actions that kind of laid out in that document. So with that, we start off with the Madison Rugby Complex, consider, excuse me, discuss and consider, and I see we have at least one representative here, and I don't know, Aaron, you want to start us off?
Yeah, Philly Street Forward Project is looking to put lights on the fields. This was approved at the plant commission with a couple of conditions. The first one Strand had asked for, that they provide a photometric study, just to make sure we're not getting light on the adjacent residential properties. And then the second one was that the lights are turned off when the fields aren't in use, so it sounds like neither of those is an issue for the club. Now, there were some questions at the plant commission, how often these would be on, so I don't know if you can share any information on that?
Brad, do you want to, because we have some folks on the Zoom, come up to the mic and make sure it's turned on, appreciate that. There's a button at the top, you have to pull it towards you. That's the only reason I ask, just for the benefit of those folks.
Does that work all right? Yeah. Yeah, so I certainly don't have all the answers, but I'm happy to provide the background or context to Aaron's point. We've got a, an estate for X amount of dollars coming our way in the next, don't know the exact timetable, probably in the next two months or so. So we wanted to make sure we were checking all the boxes with this group and the village to ensure that we wouldn't have any issues regarding both of Aaron's points. So, second one, I don't see as a, as an issue in terms of being able to get the lights off as soon as they're done being used on any given night. It's tough for me to say exactly what that schedule will look like once we have them, because teams might train, you know, a little bit later. I don't think it'll be like an 11 o'clock type of thing by any means, but as far as the photometric diagram goes, talking about residual light to the rest of the community. My hope is that it's pretty advanced, where we don't have all that residual light spreading to additional areas outside of the fields. But that's certainly something I can knock out here in the next couple of weeks, if not the next week or two.
And the commission recommended approval to the board too, that's the other thing for this. Any questions from board members? We have got Brad and Aaron.
Just sort of as a follow-up, so like, at the plant commission, there was a discussion about, you know, the timing of the lights and when they would be on. So if the board wanted to like establish a condition on when the lights are on, that would be within their authority as part of the site plan. You can obviously ask him questions too about it, about the usage and all that, but as far as your authority goes, you could establish those conditions, you know, reasonable conditions on the lighting and the timing of it. But like I said, he can provide more detail on the light usage if you're interested.
It was a little bit of a lengthy conversation about how we should word, I think basically what we're looking for is if the field's not in use, then the lights aren't on, is what, do you think that's?
Yeah, I don't see it as a, yeah, without knowing all the ins and outs, I'm fairly familiar with some in university settings and otherwise, I would expect that there's going to be a pretty functional way to do that, even when you're not there, whether it's by phone or setting timers. Sean was mentioning some of the things that they've put in with the new skate park there as well. Obviously, this is a little larger scale, but I would expect that to be a pretty fluid process, which I'm happy to share before we move forward with anything.
All right, I think that's, yeah, just the, and I, you know, there may be a time when it doesn't get shut off, but in general, you know, just for neighbors though, yeah, appreciate that, thanks.
No, I, you know, when just looking at the park, like, I mean, outside of the two, and every resident matters, don't get me wrong, but there's really, I think, two right on the corner of Vilas and Clark there, that would be our main, main discussion, I think. Outside of that, hopefully, it's minimal, but I would take your advice on how to have that conversation as well.
What's the latest the game went last year?
Yeah, I don't think games will be the issue, honestly. We probably will be able to have a few more night games that, you know, probably start 8 o'clock at the latest and not go, and games are 80 minutes, so an hour and a half, so I would think 9:30, 10 o'clock would be, would be the latest. My concern is, is teams wanting to practice later during the week, because they have lights now and people don't have to rush after work. So that would have to be monitored to make sure teams aren't training 10 to midnight or, you know, 11, or, you know, I guess it's perspective, but just managing that and making sure that we're not going too late during the week, especially on Tuesday night, for example, yeah. Yeah, again, it's tough to say, but that's, I mean, I have the ability to kind of manage that conversation, I can tell teams when they're allowed to practice and when they're not. But yeah, I would expect the occasional, I don't see a game or practice starting at 9 o'clock or later, for example, so that 8 to 10 slot might be the only we're looking at, yeah.
Would it be even reasonable to have expectations for, you know, you like, you know, the past ten or whatever, that apply automatically to you?
No, I would expect you to come up with some guidelines, and that's actually going to make it easier for me to have the conversation. Do I think it's right, do I think it's right for it to be 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock? I don't, I don't know yet, and I would make that request to you once I find out more from some of my members, but.
I can't speak very much myself, but the parks are, I think, very, you're, you're just saying.
Sure. Yeah, and again, I'm happy to, once we learn how impactful that might be, I'm happy to discuss it, you know, once, once, yeah, once we know a little more. Sure. Yeah, yeah, and ours obviously will be a little, a little bit bigger than the skate park, so a little more impact.
Sorry if you mentioned this already, but you would be, you guys would be the ones turning it off, or they go off automatically?
I have to learn more, really, in an ideal world, it's both, there's an automatic turn off at 10, no matter what, or whatever that time might be, and then I also have the ability to either do it onsite or offsite, but that will certainly be a request from me, that we're able to manage that away from the park, so that if we get a call from someone that says, hey, your lights are on and nobody's at the park, I can just go into my phone or.
Are there any like secondary lights out there? Because like if lights just go off there, it's going to be pretty dark out there.
There's lights in the parking lot, I don't know about Brad, what, if the facility has any secondary lights inside?
Just floodlighting off the building, just very small, refined, so if you pulled in, you'd know where you're going, yeah.
And there's lights now along Clark that have just been installed too, so.
Yes.
Which is right next to, obviously, your facility as well. So it wouldn't be pitch black, even if those lights went on?
So Sean, maybe we'll talk about, have that conversation with a couple of the closer residents or whoever might be the most appropriate, yeah, because those two, I want to be respectful of those two properties, even though I hear the rooster going all day at the one house, but.
That's a happy rooster.
Little different, yeah, he's angry or something.
Maybe angry. Any other questions, comments?
I guess, Richard, can we make this, I'd be curious to hear from other board members, do we think that's off, or is it a different time, or should we not have to worry about that?
No, I think 10 o'clock is reasonable, because that's when the lights are going off in the park, so that's a good time to start with, and if it ends up you need extra time or whatever, then we can have a discussion after that.
Yeah, and just, this might be obvious, but like, you know, between the months of November and essentially now, I don't see them on at all. We don't, you know, we're not doing, doing much out there, maybe once or twice a winter, but, and then really it's here and there. I don't, I don't see us pushing to super late very, very often, but we might look to utilize that 8 to 10 timeline. If people are asking for it.
Yeah, so the, if you wanted to include that in the site plan, it would be to approve the site plan with staff conditions and the additional condition that the lights cannot run past. Well, you might want to set like 10 PM and then like 8 AM or something along those lines.
Yeah, I would actually appreciate if that was in stone again, once we find the right this week.
3 o'clock sounds like a good time in the morning.
And I'll make a vote here, I move to approve the application to Madison United Rugby for a site name that makes it stand, you know, like, at the Wisconsin Rugby Sports Complex located at 448 Clark Street with staff recommendations and further recommendations that the lights not operate from 10 PM to 8 AM.
Thanks, David, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brittany. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye.
Thanks for your time.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain, motion carries. Thanks, Brad. Next then, the plant commission heard a, again, and is part of the discuss and consider, a zoning text amendment regarding setbacks on streets with rights of way width of 100 feet or more. This is right up Aaron's alley.
So currently in the ordinance, in pretty much every zoning district, there's two different front setbacks, one for a typical street, it's usually 25 feet in most districts, but then when the right of way is 100 feet or more, that changes to 40 feet. Until recently, that only really applied to N and BB, those are the only right of ways in the village that were that large. Currently in Shady Grove, where Bus Road comes south of BB, that's a 100-foot right of way, which is causing some issues with that deep setback, with people getting the kind of houses they want, you know, within a smaller building envelope. And that's really a different kind of street than N or BB, it's a residential street with a lot of driveways, people aren't driving as fast as, you know, they would be on N or BB. And there could be other cases of this in the future too, as other planned neighborhoods develop, so we're recommending making the change that that deeper setback applies to county highways with their right of way 100 feet or more and not streets, so then it would still apply to N and BB, but not Bus or any similar situation in the future.
All right, and again, the commission recommended approval of this as well. Any questions, comments regarding the amendment?
I would make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment regarding setbacks on streets with rights of way width, width of 100 feet or more as presented.
All right, thank you, Heidi, is there a second? Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain, motion carries. And that was, other than the other items I mentioned, that was plant commission for the, Heidi, anything I missed? Okay. Next then, we move right down to Deer Grove EMS Commission. We met, and Brittany will jump in any time, we met on the 16th, covered, let's see, the typical items of the commission, financial reports, budget approval expenses, write-offs of aging accounts, everything looks pretty good. And there was a discussion about the TFF EMT service award. This is similar to the discussion we had with FIRE, with trying to keep some of the folks that are volunteers in particular on the EMS, as another potential benefit of having some sort of retirement piece. I think that's still being investigated on the FIRE side, so we would just, we just refer this as the Rick action to look at this for EMTs as well. Rick, I don't know if you have any other comments regarding that?
Yeah, so I have to look into the program requirements for EMTs as well, I know there, there is a similar program, I'm just not sure about like eligibility requirements and things like that, but I can certainly add that to the list of, for the, because I know there's more stuff to look at on the FIRE side as well.
And again, overall, the commission's in favor of it, again, trying to, as we see volunteerism continue to wane across the state, and we've got a very good group of volunteers, I think, for Deer Grove EMS, it's another opportunity to at least thank them or keep them or have them serve a little bit longer if they so choose to do so. Next then, we covered the Chapman program, and this is both, we had a position description for the Chapman, as well as an SOP or a standard operating manual, the commission appro- Uh, the commission approved both of those. Again, this is, uh, another piece similar to, we put this in place for our police department as well, I think, last year. Another individual within the organization, it's a non-compensated position, but it, uh, certainly can't add a lot of value, and we have seen that in other, um, emergency services type of areas, so, um, that was covered there. And there is an individual that's interested in, in actually, uh, engaging in this, at least one, um, for, for Deer Grove EMS. Uh, next then, uh, there was a discussion about potentially, uh, considering a, a contract or proposing a contract for EMS services for Lake Mills, uh, currently the city of Lake Mills is going to be without, uh, EMS services, I think, this summer. Um, commission, and, but only for a limited time, only for three years, and they're gonna, um, essentially create their own service, it looks like, if they're in their plans. So chief kinda put together an overall look at this, as well as including potentially some costs associated with providing the service. The commission struggled a little bit by this one, uh, you know, you'd, we'd have to hire all these, uh, paramedics for that service, and again, you know, that would be part of the contract with Lake Mills, but what do we do after the three, three years with these, these team members? Um, you know, what kinda guarantees do they have? How would you even recruit for someone, it's really a, a short term thing, if it would, were to be considered something longer term, the commission would be open to discussion, but, uh, commission felt like it, it wasn't worth the Deer Grove EMS to even offer this, so we, um, at this point are choosing not to offer potential services to, uh, Lake Mills. Uh, next then, we had a closed session, um, and again, contract discussions came out of that, nothing there, um, and I think that was it. Any questions, comments? All right, then we'll move right to Library Board. David?
So I'll go quickly through the minutes, and then Tracy's here, uh, she's kinda got a, a deeper update, so I'll kinda jump around the agenda a bit, but we met on Wednesday, March fifteenth, um, for new business, we discussed the stakeholder documents, what Eric put together, the whole document, um, wanna talk through that. We did, uh, do a consolidated, um, public comments doc, so we consolidated positive and negative comments about future library and cottage grove. Um, we did recommend that we put that on the website, so Jay, you know, how to talk through a handful of things that need to go on the website. Um, we then approved the FAQs, so Cindy did a, a really good job putting together the Library Board FAQs, talking about potential library, um, really, really comprehensive, so we approved that, and we put that on the website as well. Um, we then created a, uh, approved, um, proclamation for the recognition of Dane County Library Services and Dane County Bookmobile. How much of work done by the Bookmobile, the library staff, and the importance of library services in the community, and we recommended that, that be placed on the website as well, and that, that's community. We then ran through a programming report, Tracy's gonna, that's pretty much what Tracy's here for, quick to review that. Um, we then approved the bills, and then Cindy gave her report, um, so a lot of rants, and again, I think Tracy's gonna talk through the rants, I don't know if anyone's still under it, lots of grant work being done right now. State Rec, uh, this rec, it's an additional grant idea, so the board for future consideration. Multiple teachers and daycares have reached out, asking for library services, and so that was, that's pretty much it. The friends, Kami gave her report, uh, so Megan talked about, um, the Thursday event, the friends are looking for toilet paper rolls, paper towel rolls, newspapers and magazines for their April twenty-second Thursday event at Norman Best, right? Best Park. The friends will tour in the Norman Public Library on April twelfth as well. Uh, next meeting is Wednesday, April nineteenth, Village Hall. And we're dead. Ask Tracy to come and give a programming update, cause, uh, at least once a month, I've given updates on library board, I thought it'd be good to hear from, from Tracy for that too, and she's up to a lot, um, and I, I can't do as much, but she can, she believes every day, so with that, Tracy.
Tracy, just make sure that the, the mic, uh, the lever on the top is pulled towards you, so that.
Can you hear me?
I think it's still on, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Dave, thank you, village trustees, for having me to speak today. Um, I'd like to also thank you for allocating fifteen thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-three budget to prioritize library programming, and a special thank you also to JJ, Cameron, Sean, and many other village staff people who have helped me get oriented as a, a new part-time seasonal staff person, so thank you, everybody. And also a couple of library board members are here as well today. So I'm just gonna give you a brief update of what we've been up to, and also take any questions at the end that you might have, I'll probably speak for about ten minutes or so. That's not working? Okay, there we go. Um, so I invite you to look at the third attachment on your list, this is a comprehensive list of all of the library programs that we have planned between February and August of this year. It totals, um, just under forty, I believe there's thirty-nine confirmed programs. We have an average of five to six programs per month between that period of time, some months are a little bit busier than others, like July is very heavy because kids are out of school, they're looking for things to do. February was a little bit quieter because it was really our pilot launch, and we were trying to figure out our different strategies and protocols, as well as we're learning how to work with Parks Department. I spent the first couple of weeks getting to know a lot of the different librarians in the area, so I spoke to librarians at Penny, at McFarland, at Manona and Sun Prairie, just to get advice about programming and how to really tackle this with our budget and be good stewards of that money. And one of the best tips that I got was actually from the Manona Public Library librarians, who said that there's any number of programs you can do, you could do a thousand different types of programs, but they really recommended that we find our niche, or kind of our guiding principle, that will, um, influence all of the various programs we are holding, so I talked it over with Cindy and some of our library board leadership, and we decided that our niche is movement. So you'll see in almost all of the programs that we're hosting this year, this, in the next six months or so, there's a solid theme of movement, movement of body, movement of mind, um, that kind of trickles down throughout our programming. We also, because this is our pilot year, we don't know what's gonna work in Cottage Grove, we're trying a variety of formats as well. We're doing quite a bit of virtual programming, um, because it's accessible, it's easy to reach, we can record them and share programs. We had our very first virtual program, I guess it was last Monday, we had, um, Brianna Gurley, who's on the City of Madison Disability Rights Commission, come in and teach us very basic sign language. Um, she also talked about how businesses can adapt some of their practices to cater to hard of hearing and deaf employees. And I put a picture up here of a young man named Carter, he was on the call with his sister, and they have a deaf neighbor who doesn't read lips, only uses sign language, and he was there specifically so that he could learn how to communicate with his neighbor. You all know, we don't have a physical library, so we're really using, utilizing public outdoor spaces in Cottage Grove, both county parks and also, uh, Village of Cottage Grove parks. We have a program, actually tomorrow, you are all welcome to join us, it's at McCarthy Youth Park, we have an astronomer coming in, and she'll be talking about the significance of new moon, and kind of lead people in, um, kinda getting some inspiration from that. So we meet at seven, she'll speak to us about astronomy, and then we'll do a walk around the park with glow sticks. In the summer, we are, we have, um, hired a local librarian named Win Ferrier, and she will be doing monthly storytime in the Norman Veeth School Forest and Prairie. It's very outdoors based, she'll meet us at the Taylor Street entrance to the park, walk us in, do a nature walk, and we'll tell stories, read books, and do crafts with children ages approximately two to five. And that's a normal, consistent program that you'll see throughout the summer months. Again, because we don't have physical walls to host our programming in, we're really relying on local businesses, and one business that has been absolutely wonderful to work with is, um, Manona Bank, now Lake Ridge Bank, I believe. Um, they have been hosting us every other week for storytime in Zumba Beanie, I'll talk a little bit more about what that is in upcoming slides, but they, their programming room is, is very accessible, it can comfortably host about seventy-five young, squirming, wiggly children, and it's easy to get to, so we have regular, consistent attendance at those programs. There are many different people that live in Cottage Grove, so we're really trying to reach new, as many demographics as possible. So here's three examples of different demographics that we're reaching, in the upper left-hand corner there is a lunch and learn with a local doula, this takes place at the end of April, and she'll be talking about different, um, labor and delivery strategies for any pregnant mother, um, that kind of match what they're looking for in a pregnancy and delivery. We'll be recording this, because there's only so many pregnant people at any one time in Cottage Grove, so we'd like to continue to make this available to people, so we'll probably put it on a YouTube channel. In May, on May thirty-first, we're going to be hosting a country swing dance class for teens. We noticed that there was quite a bit of, um, parents who were upset that there's not really dances anymore at the high schools, so we kinda saw this as an opportunity to try a program ourselves. So we have, um, a local dance instructor named David Hunt, who will be joining us to teach teens how to swing dance. And then the final program that I'm highlighting here is, has actually been, we've received a lot of positive feedback about this one, it's called Distillaride Adult Book Club, and it will take place on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month throughout the summer at Downdrins. Very simple, laid back, just bring a book that you're reading, drink a cocktail, and talk to other people about what books they're reading. We just wanted something fun, easy, and laid back for adults to do in the, uh, summer months. DEI is a priority of the village, and it's also a priority of the library board, so you'll see that we try really hard to offer a variety of programs that meet that lens as well. Two examples I'd like to highlight for you, um, we have a local author and four-time Paralympian athlete, Patty Sisernos Prevo, who will be joining us in July to do a reading from her upcoming book, Tenacious Fifteen Adventures Alongside Disabled Athletes. So she'll be reading books, she's gonna bring along several different types of athletic wheelchairs, so that kids and adults can kinda see what it might be like to be a disabled athlete. This event was actually supposed to take place in February, but it was one of those days that we had a snow day, so we had to cancel, and we've rescheduled it to April thirteenth. But National Day of Reading happens across the country at different libraries, and it's basically a celebration of stories supporting transgender and non-binary youth. So we have Mr. B., the pink hair in that picture, orange pair, orange hair in the other picture, who, he's the, um, the guidance counselor at Cottage Grove School, he'll be reading books, and then we have the Granite Ridge GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance, middle school kids coming to do crafts with the young kids as well. And I just wanted to share a quick quote here from Mr. B. "The welcoming school's day of reading is an opportunity for gender diverse students and their families to see themselves representative, represented in the narrative of the world." This is kinda cool, the library board actually received two copies of the book, When Aiden Became a Brother, in both English and Spanish, and we donated those to the Cottage Grove School Library, so that's what that picture is, we did that in February, Cindy, Mr. B., and some kids, and my toddler was there too. We are, um, also trying to work really hard with other village departments, the Parks Department has been, of course, wonderful to work with, um, Trista's been helping us to promote our events, and we've also had our events featured in their spring and summer guide, um, we'll also be hosting several events at village parks in the summer, so you can kinda look forward to seeing those. And also, we've been working with the FIRE department on a really exciting program called Teddy Bear Sleeper, Sleepover at the Cottage Grove Police Department, so this is basically for children between the ages of two to five, they'll bring their teddy bears down to the, uh, police station, they'll read stories with a school librarian, hang out with some police officers, and K-9 Nash, tuck their teddy bears in for the night, and then they'll go home, pick their teddy bears up the next day. And we have, um, a high school photographer who's gonna come in and do some Polaroid pictures of the bears, so that, like, the bear might be in the squad car, or hanging out with a police officer, so that the kids can take them home. And this event, I mean, we were blown away by how this event was received, I posted it on Facebook around four or five in the evening, and by the time I woke up the next day, all twenty spots were filled. So this is a program we'd also like to recreate with EMS and the FIRE department as well. Of course, we are looking to the expertise of area librarians and libraries, most notably the McFarland Library, has been absolutely wonderful. Ms. Heather, who's in the upper left-hand corner, is the Youth Services Director at that library, and she's been coming to Cottage Grove twice a month, this first Friday of the month for storytime, and the third Friday of the month for toddler zumba or zumba Beanie. And this event has been very popular, we have a lot of parents who are coming back, uh, session after session, and they're really pleased with it. Um, Ms. Heidi Cox, who is the Executive Director of that library, also brings a stash of books for kids to be able to check out, and then she'll take books back to the library, so it's kind of like a little mini mobile library that they're able to offer us. This is a quote from a parent who has been at every storytime, "My eight-year-old was delighted to watch Ms. Heather lead such a fun storytime and engage with other little ones, I was thrilled to meet other parents of young kids in our local community." Of course, you all know that the Bookmobile provides a wonderful service to us at different locations around Cottage Grove, and National Bookmobile Day is actually coming up on April twenty-sixth, so we'll be taking over the Piggly Wiggly parking lot for a little party. We have the Bookmobile and the Dane County Dream Bus there, we'll have arts and crafts with Dane County librarians, and Kona Ice will be there selling as well. We're really excited to bring DJ Martinez White, and I wanna read his program, because I think I can't do it justice, so he'll be doing his Think Like a DJ program. "It activates all four core elements of hip-hop culture, DJing, emceeing, breakdancing, and graffiti to teach financial literacy, artistic independence, and entrepreneurship to youth. In one hour, kids will be inspired and empowered to use their artistic gifts to achieve their dreams." So he'll be set up in the Pig parking lot. Um, normally he charges libraries fifteen hundred dollars for that service, but because he's a new resident to Cottage Grove and really cares about what we're doing here, he's doing that for much less, for three hundred and fifty dollars, so we're really grateful to him. So we, we are trying as hard as possible to be good stewards of the money that you've given us for programming this year, and part of that is really working with in-kind partnerships and relationships in the community, so that we can do things at very low cost to the library board. There's several of them throughout the year, but the one that I'd like to highlight for you is a regular storytime that will be happening from May to August this summer, and we will be working with CI Pediatric Therapy Centers in Cottage Grove for a movement-based storytime at Bachan Park, and they'll be doing this storytime at no cost to the library board. So participation so far, we are very early on in our programming calendar, so I don't have too much data to share with you, but I will share what we have so far. As I said earlier, our storytime in Zumba Beanie has been very popular, the first storytime had thirty-four people, the Zumba Beanie had sixty-four people, the next storytime had thirty-seven people, and the following Zumba Beanie had sixty people. Um, the sign language workshop that we held filled up really quickly, we had twelve people to sign up for that, and I also mentioned that the sleepover at the, the Teddy Bear Sleepover at the Cottage Grove Police Department filled up in about sixteen to eighteen hours, and is full at twenty people. So I'm happy to continue to provide you updates with attendance levels, what's working well, and what, uh, we might be able to learn from. So we are a new department, obviously, and we've had to get Cindy and I and the library board have had to get really creative in how we promote our programs to the community. We can do all the programming in the world, but if nobody attends, what's the point? So here's some strategies that we've been applying, probably the most influential has been to set up a Village of Cottage Grove Library Programming Facebook page, so we're very active on there, I know many of you follow us there, and we're able to actually put events there as well, so that people can share, invite their friends, and kinda generate some excitement. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we are featured weekly in the Parks and Rec eBlast, and we were also in the Community Guide. We have good relationships so far with all of the schools, every school has put our programs in their newsletter, uh, which I think is really fantastic. We've been stuffing holds at the Bookmobile, so basically putting in little pieces of promotional material into the books being delivered to Cottage Grove, primarily with QR codes that direct people to the Facebook page. Sorry, Sean, I did not pick this up today, but I will try to tomorrow. We created this half sheet here, that's on thick cardstock, we printed five hundred of them, and we're gonna be handing those out, there's a lot of community events happening in April, the Easter egg hunt, the Friends Earth Day event, and others, so we'll be handing this out to the community, to get people excited about what we have going on in the summer, and we'll also be sticking them in the four K welcome packets for new students coming into the district. I can also share those with you, if you would like some. Um, and then finally, the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library are featuring our uply, upcoming events in their monthly newsletter, and that reaches about three to four hundred people approximately every month. As Dave mentioned, we are trying to apply for external programming, so I'll give you a little overview of what we'd applied for, what we received, and what we haven't received. So we have a four thousand dollar donation from the Neil E. Park Family Foundation, um, the grandson of Neil E. Park, his name is Mike Park, he just moved to Cottage Grove with his wife and his four-year-old son. They give away about two thousand dollars every year, or sorry, twenty thousand dollars every year, specifically to literacy and early education projects. So, uh, we had a wonderful conversation with, uh, with them, and they should be delivering a check shortly. We plan to use this most likely to extend, extend Zumba Beanie and storytime on a weekly basis, starting in September. Um, we also apply, apply. We also applied and received the EBO grant. Cindy might be able to tell you a little bit more about that. She's leading the charge. But it's basically to create, how would you describe it, Cindy?
Like outdoor games and using technology outdoors, so expanding boundaries of our walls, which we don't have any, which is what's we're admitting, but it's getting out to the community.
Thank you, Cindy. We were one of 25 libraries across the country to receive that. We applied for over $10,000 to the AARP to do senior-based outreach. One gap we noticed is that while the Bookmobile comes to Cottage Grove, the residents might not know how to use the app to be able to request books. They're not super user-friendly, and I'm fairly savvy. So we would bring in Dane County librarians to do one-on-one trainings with senior residents on how to use those services so they can actually get the books that they want. We're feeling pretty confident about the 1,000 Wisconsin Small Grant that we applied for. This would specifically build two to three free little libraries in senior centers, and they would be filled with large print books that seniors actually would like to read. We unfortunately did not receive the American Library Association's grant for $2,500, but we've learned a lot in the process. Few other little things I'd like to highlight, and then I'll take any questions or comments that you have. So I mentioned earlier, this is a pilot. We expect to learn a lot. We expect to make some mistakes. We're trying things and seeing what sticks at this point. You'll probably, you probably recognize that there's a few different demographic gaps that exist in our 40 programs that are confirmed so far, primarily teens and seniors. So we just wanted to point that out. As Dave mentioned, we have received requests from schools and daycares to bring in library programming into their walls, but because we don't have librarians or the budget, we've had to say no to that. I would just like to say that typically in a community with a library, a community service, a community engagement librarian would be able to go and provide those services to businesses. Several of the new apartment complexes have reached out to us, and I've provided with them with some promotional material as well for their residents. And finally, I just want to encourage everybody to attend some of our programs, particularly Zumbini and Storytime. Just feel the excitement and the energy and see how these programs are being received by our residents. That'll take any questions or comments. This photo is actually, in the back is our, six members of our library board, and in the front are four different librarians that spoke to us at a recent panel.
Thanks, Tracy. Any questions, comments from board members?
I'd just like to thank you, Tracy, for your creativity and using resources available to figure out what programming, you know, where to start, because this really is, you know, from ground up, and creativity in utilizing spaces around the community. And thanks to Sean and Trista for making those connections, like Monona State Bank and such. And I look forward to seeing more for teens and seniors, too, because I agree that there's a gap there. And we're so isolated during COVID that I think it's great to see people meeting together and making new friends and relationships with people across our community. And, yeah, that'll be important for those groups, too. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks for coming. There's a lot of really good work here. I'd just like to highlight that the work you're doing is really great, and I really appreciate the effort. I think that it'd be nice to have you come back, maybe on a couple of occasions to kind of give us an update. And I think, too, once we finish the work with FGM, the library board, we're meeting, kind of walking through some things. Again, really appreciate your time and effort, and look forward to seeing you one morning.
All right. Anything else, David, on library?
Nope, nothing.
All right. Then we'll move to reports from village officers. Rick, anything else?
More of just a heads up at this point. So there's, I don't know if any of you have heard of what's called like a transportation utility. There's quite a lot of litigation going on about this topic right now, but there was just a case in Waukesha County where a judge upheld the legality of charging fees for a transportation utility. It's sort of like a developing space that, you know, communities are getting creative on. You can charge fees, but you can't impose taxes for certain things. So it's just an interesting sort of area that's developing. Like I said, there was a decision just issued less than two weeks ago in Waukesha that upheld the legality of one of these. It's just a circuit court decision. There's a different one that's at the Supreme Court right now, but it's sort of under a different theory. But it could be, you know, just something that makes staff and the village board aware of, you know, we can see how it evolves, and then potentially look at if it's something that the village would be interested in.
Examples?
Well, basically, it's sort of like, I guess, think of it like a garbage fee, right? So it's, maybe that's even a good example. So like the Waukesha case, there was a, it's based, the fee is based on developed land. So every person that has a developed parcel, they pay a fee, like the garbage fee or the fire protection, or fire protection fee or something like that. And then there's like a usage fee. So depending on how much traffic your property generates, it increases the fee that would be associated with that. So then that money would go towards the transportation utility, and that goes to funding roads.
Right. More similar to a stormwater utility.
Yeah, that's a better example.
Yeah, thank you.
So in that case, you'd figure out what's a, basically figure out a residential equivalent unit. So kind of you'd have a baseline for a single-family residential house, and then different, depending on impervious surface in that example, for businesses, they may have, you know, a higher calculation, you know, think parking lots, and, but you can get maybe credits to that based on stormwater factors. But as Rick mentioned with this, it's mainly for road construction and all of that. So, yeah, something to look into. I know Elders has been working on that with a few other communities.
Probably have to see how it goes through to the Supreme Court, Wisconsin Street Court.
Yeah.
Before I even think about it.
Right, exactly. Like, it's sort of early on in experimental phase, so sometimes it's nice to let others take the risks. Because the, it's basically just a question of, so you can charge fees, but you can't impose taxes that aren't allowed by law. So there are certain rules on what's a fee versus a tax. So we'll see what happens.
Anything else, Rick?
Nope, that's it. Thanks.
So keep us, it'll be our homework, thinking about that. Next, then, Herman, Finance Director.
I'm actually going to initially pass this to Aaron, unless you want to have me take a first swing at it.
Can I talk about some of the mechanics on it?
Yeah. So basically, TID 7 is at the point of its life where it has recuperated all of the project costs that went into either development incentives or making improvement. So at that point, we have until April 15th as a board to either close the TIF district or to extend the TID for a year and use the increment generated to do affordable housing projects. So one of the things I've been working with, and really Aaron's been driving this, is, okay, well, what would we do if we extended the TID, and how would we have to spend the money? So I can kick it off to back to you.
Yes, there were, excuse me, a few attachments in the packet that highlighted some different examples that different communities had done. Highlighted just a couple in the staff report here. Monona used a TIF extension to do a housing stock renewal program. They have a lot more older housing than the village does. They offer loans for home improvement projects, energy efficiency projects, things like that. City of Madison has done a series of TID extensions to fund incentives for developers to provide affordable units in projects. City of Manasha had one that was kind of a combination of a lot of different things, both home improvement grants and loans, but also down payment assistance. And they use funds to buy blighted properties that could be used as affordable housing redevelopments. So a pretty wide variety of things we could do. We just wanted to get some feedback from you guys. If this is something you want to learn more about, Cam and I can look into it, maybe propose some potential uses of it to help you make a decision. There's not really a right or wrong answer. If you really just want these properties to get back on the tax roll as soon as possible, then that's another option, too. And if there's a strong feeling about that tonight, then you can let us know that.
Cameron, what's the, just a one-year extension? How much, how many dollars are you talking about?
So we're estimating that that impact would be about $675,000. Obviously, we're required to use 75% on affordable housing and 25% to improve the housing stock. The one caveat I will say with my experience on these programs is these can be very staff-intensive projects, especially for communities that don't have, like, already like a revolving loan program or affordable housing programs. So just a little caveat there. It's not impossible to do, but we would love to hear, you know, what, you know, just not making this project very broad if we're going to do something very narrow-focused project, just to make sure that we're not biting off more than we can chew.
Cameron, just a question about the $675,000. So that would be, I guess, what's the, do you know the fund balance at closure, the estimated fund balance at closure? Because the village would get about a third of any fund balance, and that would still, that would just get delayed one year. So we would still, we would still get that. It would just be delayed a year. And then there's levy benefits, which would be not as significant, but still levy impacts that would help us a year sooner if you don't close, if you do close it now versus later, you're just delaying it a year.
So there's about a $55,000 fund balance that we would get. We get the proportionate share of the district that our normal tax roll would get as part of a surplus. And then we'd get approximately $50,000 of levy relief. The school districts by far get a much greater levy relief, and I really just put estimates in here. But depending on the results of the referendum, it could be more substantial than what's listed in the memo.
And we're going into a timeframe where we're going to be pushed up against the levy, correct, Matt? Or, Herman?
By 2026, certainly. And there's this budget cycle. It seems like there's momentum to make some adjustments to shared revenue, which will certainly help us, but it won't, you know, it won't make us completely whole in that regard. There's also some discussion at the state level about maybe an additional exemption on the levy limit worksheet for public safety-related purposes. So that would be, you know, it's, that doesn't help the taxpayer, but it helps from a levy limit perspective. So it would allow the village board for, I mean, we'd have to wait to see how it's written, but we would think it's likely to be, the language would likely include police-fire EMS purposes. So you could exceed the levy limit for those purposes, similarly to how we can exceed, basically, like debt is, we could borrow and that's exempt. So public safety above and beyond the levy limit would be potentially proposed as exempt, but, you know, that's pretty early yet in the state's process, but that's something that's being talked about and something that the league is lobbying on villages and cities' behalf.
So the board, we brought this to the board tonight, so we have to make a decision at the next board meeting, April 3rd. So I encourage discussion, either discussion tonight or with staff between now and the next meeting, but we would have to make a decision by the April 3rd meeting.
I think they want some options. Like, you said the staff intensity. I don't know if that'd be correct, but like, if you and Aaron came up with an option, it's tough to, you know, a dollar's a dollar. Alleviating any levy record, nice, but I guess that's just a thing. That, I guess, the way I'm going to refer, I can't really, without an option, I mean, it's tough to, like, it's a clear cut winner, right? Like, oh, let's take 50 grand, 50 grand. But I think that if there was an option, it did not take up too much time of staff time, but made a lot of sense. I know it's the housing study that we did, like, I think there's things that we can do. I think what I found really interesting, though, the business today is the Chamber of Commerce study, and it basically echoed with the housing community came home. I mean, I sent Aaron an email. I was like, maybe just more ammo to that argument, right? So I think it's, I'm torn, but I guess they just need an option, something that I can put on.
I'm leaning toward put it on tax rolls because we really need it at this point. But there are some very important things in our housing study that, you know, they point to, like condo, you know, the smaller building, home ownership for entry level, or downsizing that kind of gives that stability in your payments when you're starting out and actually a down payment you can achieve, you know, as a first-time buyer, or, you know, when you sell your house, you can buy a condo and have that. You know, I feel like that's a real missing housing stack that we don't quite have enough of in the village. So that was kind of the first thing I thought of when I was looking at this. But, yes, I, you know, the realities of our finances, it might be best to just close it, but I guess if there's a great...
Cameron, from a staff time perspective, can the funds be used to hire staff to run, if it's a, you know, I'm not suggesting that creating a revolving loan fund and maybe an additional program or two would necessarily bring you to needing a full-time person or anything like that. But I'm just wondering, can you use the, can the funds be used at all to pay for that?
And that's one thing I haven't been able to completely flush out. I do plan on having a follow-up with Greg. A lot of the state stuff basically has 10%. You can use 10% of the funds, you know, you can say it's affordable housing, but then use it for staff time. And when I say staff-intensive, you know, it's like, okay, well, what happens if, you know, that house gets foreclosed upon? Are we writing that loan off, following up, sending letters, managing those amortization schedules? So it's not that it's a difficult process to do. It just does require some time. But I do believe you should be able to use some funds, what that dollar amount is, though, I'm not sure.
I guess just one other thing I thought of on that is, the other thing that I would hate to happen is if we're offering, if we're developing this program to offer development incentives to produce this type of housing, I would hate to get to the, and then we didn't, like, no developer came forward with that, and then we could have had that money on the tax.
I think, I'm with you, like, it's, putting on tax rules, you mentioned, but at the same point, we've got a lot of, and it could be, we have two weeks, right? So I think we give staff time, and then we can, then we can roll back.
And if there's other ways.
Oh, sorry, Heidi. I was going to say, from that perspective, I think it's, as best as Cameron and Aaron can, because to estimate the approximate time, because a lot of it's going to fall on their departments and their, you know, close-to-one-person departments. So that's something to consider with all this, but it is a good opportunity to create, you know, it's hard to create a revolving loan fund, you know, usually needs some sort of cash infusion. And when does that, when does that happen? Maybe it's a land sale and you dedicate money towards that, or there's potential grants for that, but, you know, this is another option, so.
Yeah, and kind of like what Matt was saying. Yeah, and kind of like what Matt was saying, if we would choose to keep TID 7 open when TID 5 is ready to close, I, I would not recommend opening it because we just, I, I know we don't have the, the staff time to manage almost a $3 million affordable housing program. So just something else to consider here. And that has a much more substantial impact on the tax rule at a year that we, we need it. Another thing to keep in mind is we're allowed to, when we, in the levy limit, from a simple perspective, it's kind of like compounding interest. So you, we would lose essentially 50 grand in year one and then 50 grand times our net new construction because it can continue to build on itself. Just making staff aware or board aware.
One last thought on, there could be other ways that we could, we, we do have a lot of other TIDs. I'm not sure what's in that, but there could be other ways that we can incentivize the types of things that we're looking for in the housing study. You know, maybe there is a, then on this, that's the other factor, I guess, that I'd be interested in.
Look in the, in the, there's a lot, there's a lot of, so I think to your point, there is, I think that, I mean, where I said it's at that missing middle, right? I think we kind of, we kind of, kind of touched on that, but again, to your point, there's, we put this $1,000,000 of developments and there's no way it takes itself on that. I think, I think there's a, is there any question there? I guess I'm hung up on the, on the staff time. Is there an option that takes the least amount of staff time that can also make that, there's a number of like you guys, tell us what that is, right?
There are some companies out there that offer to basically run these programs on behalf of municipalities. One thing I've found that they don't do a great job on is like advertising the program. They basically are like, all right, community, you know, you want to do this program, advertise it, get, get, get feedback, because they're gonna charge their annual fee to do it regardless of how active the program is. And that's something to look into. And, and again, it's, we get five, 10 loans, not a big deal. We get 25, 50. You're talking about a substantial weekly investment.
One way to maybe do it would be to have just a couple, if it's 675,000, create certain, we talked to some, I guess we don't have a ton of time to vet this, but you know, figure out what would be the most help to developer of a certain targeted, you know, missing middle and, you know, and if someone is able to meet that category or categories, maybe there's, you know, multiple 300-ish thousand dollar incentive grants, you know, that would be a way to make a difference, meet an objective in the plan and not be too staff intensive at all.
Obviously welcome to shoot Aaron and I emails on any feedback that you guys have to, to point us in any specific direction. Thanks, thanks Aaron did a lot of work on pulling information together for that, so I appreciate your time Aaron. Fun stuff, kind of talking about unaudited 2022 financial results. You know, I'm, I'm happy to, to report, you know, our unrestricted fund balance or really our percentage of fund balance that determines kind of how healthy our reserves are, dropped from 37.6% to 30.5%. When I initially kind of started going through the, the financial data, we were closer to 25 to 26%. So we've spent some time, you know, kind of looking at things in different lenses and getting to where we need to be. The, the fund balance policy, as I'm sure some of you are aware, is to be between 20 and 30%. What becomes challenging in times of inflation is that percentage is a percentage of our budget. So if we're increasing our budget by 10, 11%, and we're not budgeting a surplus, that number obviously would expect to, to shrink. And, and I would expect that number to again shrink by several, you know, potentially even several percentage points next year. We're internally doing a lot of work to, to figure out how to most efficiently spend the 2023 budget and, and kind of end up where, where we need to be. The, the total loss in the general fund for this past year was 345,000. Again, 311,000 was planned with the TIF 6 loan forgiveness, advance forgiveness. And, and again, that, that had no impact on the unrestricted fund balance because it, it was already saved for essentially in the year prior. Our capital project fund or our main, our main fund that supports our, our yearly project had a $2.1 million gain. One thing to remember is we did have a $7.1 million, approximately $7.5 billion debt issuance. So we started off the year at 461,000 deficit in that fund, ended about 1.6. Of that 1.6, about 1.2 million is required for projects that are still going on that were intended with a 2022 debt issuance. So that leaves our fund balance at approximately 477,000. As we went through the 2023 budget process, we thought that number would be about 450,000. So kind of right where, right where we wanted to be slightly better. The end of the year, interest rates ticked up a little bit, so that ended up helping the capital project fund. Any, I guess, to, to my point, these are unaudited numbers. We do have our financial audit next Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. After that time, I will send out the, the formalized schedules that you can look at fund by fund, ask questions, and I'll propose some office hours to discuss if anybody would like. Quickly after that, I do anticipate to have first quarter information to the board to present. Again, I will send out, or I will send in that packet the actual schedules, but again, offer any office hours if any board member would like to come and, and discuss. We have our second ARPA report due April 1st. It's gonna be really boring. We haven't spent any, we didn't spend anything as of 2022. A few IT projects we got going on. Our major cabling project at MSB is delayed there. They have kind of a part that they're waiting on, anticipated to be mid-April. Our phone system kind of reconfiguration should happen Thursday and then the new server is ready to start working its way over here. They originally wanted the cabling project done complete before that install, but they're gonna move forward with, with the replacement prior. Any questions?
Cameron's talking to all the current, thermal and banks specifically, is it Valley Bank or your public bank, specifically, do you know, are bond holders held or anything?
Bond holding, I'm not, I'm not sure. Are the, the village assets, you know, strategically are in sweep accounts? So basically our, you know, a lot of our $12 million gets spread out to make sure it's fully insured. As far as our, our bondholders, I'm not, I'm not sure at this time.
That'd be interesting to check, just because Chris, we just wiped off 70 million loans.
Yeah.
So our bond holders will blow that.
I'll check with Greg.
What do you have, comment, comment about the next one? So what happened?
I, I will say, very fortunate and kind of as part of the 2023 budget, there was some assumption that there would be some rebound in investment rates and market. I'm already have seen almost a full recovery of the village's assets. So there was about $56,000 of loss that was reported, you know, what I like to call fake loss. The market value now has adjusted to be almost flat with what it was in 2021. So we'll see that positive impact in the 2023 financials.
Right, it's talking about, you know, you're talking about gains and losses.
Hey, I, I mean, we're getting like five, 6% interest rate right now. It's crazy. Take that all day.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thanks Cameron, thanks Aaron. Then we move right down to communication, mostly it's business and this is consideration of approval for vouchers. Any questions, comments in the vouchers as presented?
Make motion to approve the vouchers as presented?
Thanks Heidi, thanks David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Correspondents? I didn't have anything. Anybody else? Upcoming community events?
Rain barrel online now. Contact Public Works Department about compost bins. Yeah, information on our website and you can look on our Facebook stories for more too.
And the rain barrels work well because ours did at least last year. All right. Thanks Heidi. Anyone else? We're still in between that season. We're in mud season right now, so soon we'll have a bunch of community events, particularly in April. Then we move to future agenda items. Shaking your head? Make something up.
We have that housing, the housing TID stuff we talked about, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, correct. Thank you. All right. Item 11.
Motion to withdraw.
Thank you Brittany, thank you David. Not a vote of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks everybody, have a good rest of your week.